I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert.
Mayor Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda with the addition of item eighteen. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item two is a motion for approval of minutes from May fifteen, two thousand sixteen and May thirty first, two thousand sixteen. We need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? There's nothing under awards and recognition tonight. Item number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item number five. The resolution receiving bids for Oakland Place Southeast Street Lighting. Steven?
Yes, as you described, we recently received bids from two contractors for a replacement of the streetlights along Oakland Place Southeast. That would be from Fourth Street Southeast out to the East Side Lake Dam. We'd look at replacing those lights with new Cobra Head style lights and LED as well. We had two bidders on the project with Fox Electric Company Incorporated, the low bidder at one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. This project would be funded through our state aid account and we would recommend awarding the bid to Fox Electric.
Counsel, any questions? This goes from Fourth Street to where?
To the East Side Lake Dam Bridge.
Okay, counsel, any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is the resolution, receiving bids for Trailer Park and Third Avenue Northwest Street Lighting. Steven?
Yeah, these are two smaller projects that we combined into one. The first one being the Oakland Park Trailer Community out west of town on Oakland Avenue West and Thirty-Sixth Street Southwest. Those, most of the roadways out in that area are public right-of-ways, which is unique for a trailer park area like that. So therefore, we are responsible for the street lighting as well. So we looked at a new, a new style of street lighting out there where we will salvage some of our existing poles, repaint them, and put LED decorative heads on those, refurbished poles. And then we'll reposition a lot of the poles that are out in that area to eliminate a lot of the street lighting that is there, go back to more of our standard, which is at intersections. We'll apply that same kind of standard to this area as well. The second project of these two is on Third Avenue Northwest from Fourth Street to Fifth Street, adjacent to Pacheli Catholic Schools. There are four streetlights there, again, that we'll refurbish and add LED heads. These two projects together, we had two bidders with Fox Electric, again, being the low bidder at one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and eighty cents, and we would recommend awarding this project to Fox Electric.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for six.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, seven is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We do this every meeting. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ted is, or, sorry Ted, thinking about things coming up. Eight is a resolution approving a conditional purchase agreement with Austin Utilities for the purchase of power plant site.
Mayor members, if it's all right, we'll take, we can take eight and nine kind of considered together. Before you this evening is the most recent lease and purchase agreement related to the community recreation center. The discussions related to the lease have been ongoing and increased attention has been given to the pool hours related to the facility as the, thinking of when the doors would open for the facility. The process has been difficult balancing specificity with flexibility in a thirty-year agreement with the YMCA. This agreement also provides after the first term, five-year notice from either party for the option to purchase, the Y would have the option to purchase the facility. The building will be under the city's ownership while the YMCA maintains responsibility for the operations of the facility, for maintenance, utilities, and insurance while receiving two hundred thousand dollars payment from the city for the public portions of the facility. The capital replacement costs for the building are allocated to the city based on public portions or use percentages of the facility. The YMCA has quiet enjoyment of their portion of the facility. Public areas are identified as a five thousand square foot free youth activity center with minimum hours, two thousand square feet children's play area, free use of the broad community event space, free walking track access for two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening, establishment of a discounted aquatic center rate for city of Austin residents at eight dollars with minimum hours, discounted all access pass of twelve fifty for Austin residents. The city shall maintain a non-voting member of the, on the YMCA board to serve as an effective communications conduit for the ongoing operations of the facility, as well as reporting to the Parks Advisory Board for the residents' utilization of the public portions of the facility. As I mentioned, the pool hours have been a specific area of ongoing discussion, and I turn it over to Craig Byram to highlight some of those discussions.
Thank you, Craig. As Craig suggested, everything here is a balancing act between a number of different competing interests, one being certainty and things we can count on in the future, another being an acknowledgement that a thirty-year contract requires some level of flexibility because circumstances may change. But one of the more important things that we talked about at the last work session is the competing interest between the Y operating as a membership service organization concerned about its members' needs and this building also serving as a community center that serves the needs of the broader public in a variety of important ways that we've talked about in the past. The subject matter of, that's currently in front of you, I guess, or the dispute that has, that has been placed in front of you tonight, is a dispute about whether this agreement should include mandatory minimum number of hours that the aquatic center would be available to the public to use. If you recall at our last work session, the big discussion at that time was the fee that would be charged to the public to use the aquatic center. So obviously, when you're talking about charging someone a fee, it is helpful or important to know what it is that they're getting for that fee and to make sure that that fee then matches what they're getting. The history of how hours have been treated in these negotiations is in many of the earliest drafts, it just said that the aquatic center would be open ten hours a day. Essentially, that was put in as a placeholder because we knew that during a school year, perhaps ten hours a day is not as appropriate as ten hours a day in the summertime might be as far as when the public would want to use the facility or would be inclined to use the facility. If you recall at the last work session, I told you that there were negotiations going all the way up to about five fifteen that day. Those were discussions, the Y was asking that the ten hours a day be replaced with something more proximate to their current schedule. And they have a schedule for during the school year and they have a schedule for during the summer. And that was explained to us, and I attempted to put that into the document that you saw at the last work session. Sometime after the work session, additional objections or concerns are raised by the YMCA about that schedule, and we have had additional discussions with staff, with Park and Rec, with others on staff, again, focused on when would the public really want to use these facilities? What do we as the public need to ensure that these facilities are made available to the public if they choose to pay the eight-dollar fee that we've set for them? And as a result, some of the hours have been cut. In fact, from what was in the work session materials to today, the total number of mandatory hours has been cut by approximately fifty percent or exactly fifty percent. But that's not a reflection of us giving away hours that were important. That's a, really a reflection of us more carefully studying when the public would be inclined to use the facilities. And so, the hours that are set during a school week would be hopefully after school hours, not ten hours, but a much shorter duration time that's more reflective of when families might actually come. From a staff position, from, from the city's negotiations position, we felt that those were the hours that would be the most important, or those were the hours that we wanted to create as a floor so the public knew that they were getting that as a minimum. Then, if the facility is widely used and so lots of people are paying the eight dollars or otherwise creating a revenue stream, obviously, the Y would be, we would hope, inclined to expand those hours above that. But we were setting a floor. What we wanted was to make sure the public was protected, that it couldn't dip down into a level that was deemed unacceptable from the general public's perspective. The materials that are in front of you, and I believe the suggestion is that, the hope would be that you would approve something this evening, the materials in front of you contain that schedule that the staff, the negotiating team on behalf of the city, put together as being an acceptable resolution. It's my understanding that the membership or representatives of the Y are here. As I understand their position, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, they believe that the Y should have the discretion to set the hours of operation for the aquatic center for both their members and the public based upon their own internal managerial decisions and that they would prefer this contract not contain that floor or that minimum number of hours. I would note that this, our position is consistent with other areas. It was important to us to begin with that there be walking track access at a certain number of hours a day. Those are set in the contract specified. They're not capable of being unilaterally discretioned away by the YMCA. They're part of the agreement to begin with. The youth activity center has set hours that are consistent with past experience of when youth would use a facility like that. Those are set as a minimum or a floor so that the public knew that that was sort of a guarantee. The indoor play area has a certain number of hours. So for the things that were important to the public, we've taken a fairly consistent across-the-board approach. And so, I guess on that item, I would ask if anybody has any additional questions?
We're obviously handling eight and nine as together.
Good. So I have some comments about the purchase agreement as well, if, if we want to move to that.
I do have one question, Craig. I believe that we discussed, or it's in the materials, that there's an opportunity for an annual review or discussion so that the public can feel confident that, just what you said about use or, or, you know, as things change, because I think it's, it's very difficult for all of us to know exactly how it's all going to play out until it's functioning. So that should be, I would hope, reassuring to people that, that, that there's an opportunity, you know, to adjust and, and there's some ebb and flow. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's paragraph G on exhibit D describes an annual review process primarily focused on the rates. However, it's my position, and I think it's widely held by those who have been discussing these subjects, if you have a problem with the hours, one of the responses would be to say, "Look, I'm, I'm losing money by having these five lifeguards standing around for nothing, so I got to raise the rate." And the honest response would be from the other side to say, "Well, wait a minute. If it's all about the hours because nobody's coming during a particular time, let's keep the rate where it is, but let's adjust the hours." So while the contract talks about the rates specifically, those rates are tied into the business success, the, the ability to cash flow, the ability to make this work from a fiscal standpoint. So if the hours prove to be problematic later, they're in that same annual review process.
And the contract states a year, but I think if, if the Y came to us and showed that they were having problems, we could do it at nine months or even earlier. I mean, it's in our interest to see that the Y survives and survives fiscally sound. I mean, the Y can survive without a rec center, but the rec center can't survive without a Y. That's something we've kept foremost in our thoughts throughout this process. Okay.
I've got a quick question. On, on the open hours, that's not specified morning or afternoon. It just depends on the program and of the Y and where they would like to set it?
The, excuse me, the hours for the aquatic center are set as a certain number of hours per day. There, so there is already built in a certain amount of discretion for the Y to determine what are the most advantageous hours of the day for them to get the most uses and the most day fees with the least amount of expense. But it's also, there's a, there's a provision built in, the aquatic center will consist of what we call water features, which are water slides and more entertainment-style amenities, and then a traditional swimming pool. That would be more of an athletic facility. And the, the way it's drafted now, there is an ability for the Y as necessary to accommodate structured classes that they may be offering, because the Y will be using the same aquatic center that the public is using, to close off certain parts of the pool, but they have to keep the fun parts or the, you know, the water feature sections open for the people paying the eight dollars. And it was our, our thought that those are the features that people are most likely paying principally the fee for. And if they have to leave the shallow end of the pool for an hour because there's a water aerobics class going on, that would be an acceptable accommodation so that both the public and the Y can use these same facilities for the, for each of their needs. So there is that balancing in there as well.
So it wouldn't be a block of time. It just could be a couple hours or an hour and throughout the day?
Yeah, right now, it's just set as a certain number of hours per day.
Okay.
There is discretion to that level.
Okay. Anything else from counsel? If not, Mr. Splinter, would you like to address the counsel on your proposal?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, city council members, city administrators and staff, greetings. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, standing before you to discuss the Vision 2020 Rec. Center project. My name is Jim Splinter, and I'm a resident of Austin and have been for nearly twenty years. My wife, Vicki, and I have raised two daughters in Austin, so we know this is truly a place to live and grow. Over the last four years, I have been, been an active member of the Vision 2020 Austin Community Rec. Center project. Indeed, my journey began on April two thousand twelve at the project unveiling. Tonight, this journey brings me before you. Like you, Vision 2020 has a strong commitment to the Austin community and its residents. Like you, we are motivated by the Austin Community Rec. Center vision for the good it can do for our community. Like you, we've listened, studied, and researched the needs of our community and learned how best to serve them. As public servants, in your case, and as community organizers in our case, we have reached, we have considered the opposing views and sought the common ground as we balance the community needs with the hard economic realities of such a project. Tonight, you will vote your support of the Austin Community Rec. Center project, a thirty-five million dollar state-of-the-art facility built solely with private funding. And in the spirit of a true private-public trust to do good for the community, we recognize the city's two hundred thousand dollars in annual operating support of the facility on behalf of the Austin citizenry. Such an investment will improve the lives of the underprivileged. It will help serve the needs of an elderly populace, and it will act as an economic multiplier to stimulate the local economy. It is only through such private-public investments that we create the infrastructure necessary to bring families and new businesses to our community. It is only through such private and public investments that we will be able to enhance our tax base and become an even more self-sufficient city government. There remains two unresolved issues as you consider your vote. The first was already discussed. It's placing the actual hours of aquatic center operation into the lease agreement. We would prefer that that language state that the public will have access to the aquatic center during YMCA-designated hours of aquatic center operation. It's been our history to maximize the use of our pool facility at the YMCA, and we have no intentions of changing that, that direction. Thus, we don't see the need to declare the actual hours in the agreement of the aquatic center operation as any minimum that would be established would likely be achieved anyways. Second, the issue of family rate passes has been raised for public access to the aquatic center. The agreed-to eight-dollar-per-day pass was a major concession and would not be financially prudent to offer additional discounts until after we gain an actual operating experience. We have an obligation to our private and now public donors to operate a financially sustainable rec center. A facility that the size that we're talking about would have an estimated annual operating budget between two-point-one million dollars and two-point-five million dollars. So the city's financial commitment of two hundred thousand dollars per year represents less than ten percent of the overall operating budget. It will be our intention to review such rate and accommodation requests annually, as already provisioned in the lease agreement. Hopefully, our financial operating experience will be such that we can provide some budget flexibility for family rate passes sometime into the future. I leave you with this Greek parable, which I think places a long-term perspective that this project represents for Austin. "A society grows great when people plant trees whose shade they know they will never sit in." Tonight is a legacy vote for each of you, and I humbly ask for your vote. Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel? We have questions for Mr. -- obviously, I think we're probably going to take nine, the lease agreement, and then we'll take number eight, the purchase agreement. Are we fine with that, Mr. Byram? Okay. Questions on the, on the lease agreement?
I just, I just want to make a really brief statement of my own. As, as many, and I could, because I've gotten some questions about this. As many citizens are aware, I was actively involved in efforts to get the Vision 2020 Power Plant Committee reestablished to explore options for revitalization. But at the same time, throughout that process, I made it clear that I was not opposed to the Community Rec. Center. I felt that a different site would be better. But as the process moved forward and it became very clear that there was no path to the redevelopment of the power plant structure across the street as it stands, it, it was my responsibility, I felt, as a member of the city council and as a citizen of Austin, to say, you know, well, that, that's not going to happen. So what is, what is the best choice? What is the most viable choice to develop the property and to have the Community Rec. Center project move forward? So my support of the Community Rec. Center is, is because the reality is that that, that is the, what, what is most likely and the best use now of that space. I do continue to support historic preservation and, and believe that, and I, and I think I share that with many, that that's valuable to Austin. We've seen that with the Main Street Project, with the Paramount Theater, with the Art Works Center, and so on and so forth. So there will be opportunities in the future to explore those kinds of things in Austin, but not across the street.
Well, indeed, there are provisions in our plans to try to preserve, as you know, the turbine room up to a certain financial level, five hundred thousand dollars. So that clearly is something that we'd like to do.
I, I do hope that happens.
And I think it's been made clear throughout these negotiations that any amount that's spent to preserve that is going to come off the facility cost. So if it's going to cost five million dollars to preserve that, you're going to get five million dollars less in your building, and that's something we have, everybody has to weigh in on this. Okay, counsel, anything else?
Jeremy.
Jeremy?
I just want to talk again about the family passes. I, I do think it's important for the citizens to have a family pass or an under-second grade discounted rate. I did call around some other aquatic centers today, and they had under, age two was free. I think there should be some concession to that. Again, the, I did call around at the work session and we talked, and the highest YMCA in the area was Rochester at a twenty-five-dollar-a-day rate. So I think it's important for the citizens to have a affordable rec center, and I think that's part of the affordability. Another question to that, I know we're going to, it's being touted as an asset to the community, and everyone's going to want to see it, and when we invite family and friends to town, what are they going to pay? I know it's a twenty percent discount to the citizens of Austin, but what are the families going to pay on the daily rates? And, and I know the foundation is picking up the tab between second grade and through high school for either a dollar to sixty dollars based on family's income. But what will those rates be for guests?
So the rates will be the same, eight dollars per person until we get financial experience. I think our primary goal was to build a sustainable rec center. And I think in year one, until we actually, you know, get that experience, it would not be prudent for us to offer, you know, further discounts on that already, you know, affordable eight-dollar-per-day pass that we successfully negotiated. So that was a pretty major concession on behalf of, when you look at the P and L of this facility, and I believe it is a long step in the right direction. It may not meet all of our needs, but to have a project of this size and this magnitude come down to a family pass, to me, you know, means that we need to look at the entire opportunity in front of us, what this represents for the entire community, and we'll work towards a solution in the future as the best I can give you at this time.
I think counsel has voiced several different concerns, several counsel people. I think the agreement could be characterized as a good agreement, although not perfect. But at this point, I mean, this is, this is the agreement that we've negotiated, and it's not my intention. That we can ask, but we're not going to hang, I'm not going to hang my approval on this, on those two issues, which hopefully we can resolve in the future. I mean, at, you know, at the same point, we had a, well, I don't want to get into, into too much, but, you know, we had approved an agreement a couple weeks ago. Hopefully, we can, the council will approve something similar or possibly yours. We'll put both of them to the council tonight, and we can move forward with this. This has been--
Yeah. I mean, I would tell you that if, if, if it does go to vote tonight, you know, with the minimum number of hours, that is not something that's been approved by the YMCA board. It would have to go through the YMCA, YMCA board for approval, and I would not be optimistic about it passing at the YMCA.
I would hope we would be able to address the YMCA board with something we haven't been able to do at, till this point.
Very good.
And, you know, just as you're, you're putting your case forward, we could put our case forward to the, we've come much, much too far, and everybody's worked on this way too hard to let the last inch stop this project.
Good.
And we can't do that. So--
Your Honor, I guess I'd just like to make a couple comments if I may. I guess I, I would like to advocate for the family pass or a reduced rate for under, under second-grade children as well. But since that, that issue did not really come to light till, basically after we had agreed to this document at the last work session, I'm okay with moving forward without that at this time on the good faith that the, the Y will work with us on that. Also, I guess as far as the hours are concerned, I guess we're not dictating actual hours, you know, that you have to be open from one to five or eight to ten or whatever. It's just a minimum so that we can guarantee that if somebody does want to go on a Tuesday, they know that for their eight dollars, they're going to be able to enjoy it for at least four hours on that day. And I guess as far as the public contribution, directly, yes, the city is only, only contributing two hundred thousand dollars, which some would say is a fairly large sum of money. But I would argue that in addition to that, these day passes are coming from the public and that that is public support of the operation of the facility as well. So that should be taken into consideration, too.
Absolutely.
So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
And, and that two hundred thousand dollars isn't money we're going to recover. When you talk about the two million dollar budget, you expect to recover most of that through what, memberships and things like that? Is that correct?
I'm not clear.
You said your budget is, is going to be two hundred million, or two million for the Y? You said your budget is, is gonna be 200 million, or 2, 2 million for the Y? And you're gonna, but you're gonna recover most of that, 2 million?
2.5.
I'm sorry if I misstated that. Whereas, you know, the 200, the 200,000, it's just taxpayer money that, that we're not gonna recover. So, I mean, there's a little bit of difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nonprofit organization, the YMCA, so, I mean, if there are any surpluses, that's all gonna be reinvested back into the community in some fashion, so.
Well, we understand that the Y is gonna be a tremendous benefit to the city. I don't think that's ever been in doubt, and we look forward to, to getting the Y and to having it built and, uh, just seeing what it is.
I have a, I have a question. Um, you know, I thought last week, you know, the work session, we came to, uh, an agreement, and you finally got someplace, and now we're trying to change it again. I was kinda hoping that would go nice and smooth tonight, Jim, and, uh, get through. But, um, who owns the present YMCA building? I believe you do.
The YMCA does.
YMCA, and I'm hoping that the sale of that, when this gets built, will that revenue go towards the operate, operation costs?
That money could go there. I mean, it's to be determined, um, where that would go, but we have, um, obviously, that'll be one of the opportunities for a contingency that the Y would have, so that they, if they are short budget, they would be able to draw upon that, uh, during the first couple of years of operations. So, that has been, no decisions have been made. I mean, the building isn't sold or anything of that nature, so.
Well, we, we never talked about that, but that is some, that is a valuable piece of property.
It is, it's an asset.
Could go someplace, yeah. So anyhow, I hope, uh, last week's decision will, will be, uh, something that your board can look at and, uh, take a strong look. That's what the City of Austin wants, and I hope they want it too.
I just wanna add on there too. Jeff was talking about public costs. Another thing that was brought up at the work session last time, uh, was the infrastructure costs that, um, a lot of times when a new building's built, the developer pays for that, but I believe the understanding is that the citizens will be paying for the new infrastructure. And Stephen, you said last time, what, about a half million you were estimating? And then there'd be a traffic study as well to determine how much, or?
We talked today, it'd be up to like 600,000, wouldn't it, Stephen? So, that's.
Just so y'all know, yeah, that, that's also public money going into this project. And I guess where I stand on this project still is where I stood from the beginning is I, I think a new YMCA is a great project. I do not think that it should be funded with taxpayer money, though I think it's a private nonprofit, and it should stand on its own, so.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Splinter had made a recommendation that we do.
Does the public have to?
Any public wanna say anything? It's not really a public hearing, but we can open it.
Do we wanna vote on number eight first?
Well, I think we're gonna handle number nine first. Let's do the lease agreement. I asked Mr. Byram if that's okay, and he said that was. I think eight will be kind of an automatic once we get nine done. Brian, why don't you, you have to give us your name and your address?
Brian Lilis, uh, 1503 18th Drive Southwest. I have been a member of the Austin community for the last 15 years. Um, I think it's actually today I moved to town 15 years ago. My wife and I have three children here in town, members of the Y. I've been a member of the YMCA Board for over 10 years, and over the course of that 10 years, I can tell you, we've had numerous discussions about a new facility, what we currently have with our, with our existing facility, and the idea has come up many times about getting into a new facility. So, you can imagine that our enthusiasm grew as the Vision 2020 Rec Center project kicked off. I would just state that I give a lot of kudos to the committee itself and to Ted Maxfield, our executive director, for working through a lot of these details with Craig and with Craig, as they've talked about a number of what I would consider more concessions or leaning in, if you will, from the YMCA's perspective as to how the 200,000 is gonna be utilized, whether it be the walking track, uh, the maintenance of the grounds, those types of things. I would say that, and Jim, um, didn't take my thunder, but talked about that the agreement that we voted on prior to the working meeting as a YMCA Board did not include this language, so it would be something that we would take back, uh, depending on the, the outcome tonight. Uh, but I would ask that, that we do continue to move forward. I still believe that a rec center, a community rec center, is the best way for us to move forward because we've done the research to understand the needs of the community, and the YMCA will continue to be a great partner as we work on this, so, thank you.
I think, well, first off, I'm gonna ask Counsel, any more questions? Okay, do we have a motion to put this forward with no hours attached to the rec center?
Well, it's a minimum. There's a floor, there are some hours, right?
Well, no, not according to, we.
The YMCA's request that there be no floor.
Right.
Is what he's asking.
We're, and I, I think it's a, as far as I'm concerned, it's an agreement that we voted to move forward a couple of weeks ago, and I'm very comfortable with that agreement. I think both sides were in agreement that day, so I hate to see it now be changed. I'm, I'm willing to, to say on behalf of the city and make the motion that we approve that, the agreement as, as written two weeks ago.
Same agreement we approved last week?
No.
The one?
The one that's before us.
The one that's before us.
Yes.
Okay, is there any more discussion on it? Is this a motion or this is a resolution? Mr. Dave, or Dave, you got a resolution in a second?
Yeah, Dave's the second.
So, I've got a motion by Councilmember, this is on item number nine, the lease agreement. I have a motion by Councilmember King, seconded by Councilmember Hagan, to approve the agreement as proposed. This will require five yes votes.
And I have to tell you right now, I have no idea how this is gonna come out, everybody.
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Nay.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Nay.
Enright?
I do wanna just say that I have been struggling with this, um, very much, um, more so in the last two weeks. Um, I've gotten input from both sides, and I am uneasy. Um, my gut tells me no, um, but then I also feel that I have to put a little trust out there. There is a lot of gray areas, but, um, with the negotiating that you guys have done in recently and over time shows that people are both willing to work together, and it is an extreme gift to the community. I think it's going to be a big asset. So, even though I'm very uneasy, I'm gonna say aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-2, Your Honor.
Do you know when this will go to the Y Board?
Our next scheduled meeting is the last week in June.
Last week in June? And what day is that? Do you, do you have a set day, or do you?
Usually the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Okay. And I would hope that we're, we'd be allowed to at least state our position at that. And I, you know, I'm confident we'll, we'll get through this. We have to. I mean, it's not an option. Failure is not an option on this. Okay? Anybody else wanna, any statements before we move on? Go ahead. I mean, normally, we have a statement for this where we open things at the end of the meeting, and somehow I have a feeling marijuana's gonna get worked into this, and I hope not.
We'll rebuild it out of hemp, but that's not my intention. Uh, my husband had actually requested that I address you guys today as well. He sent a statement. Hopefully, you guys can read that if you haven't yet. Uh, I did marry a sixth-generation former.
First of all, the, what is this about?
This is about the rec center. I did raise my hand three times.
I know, but it's not a public meeting, and, and it seems like every time you get in front of us, you try and talk to us about doing something for approving marijuana, and I'm actually, to be honest with you.
Well, that's your assumption, sir. I am actually strictly here tonight for the issue at hand on.
Okay.
Tearing down the rec center.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. It won't even take me that long. You don't begin a sustainable program with destruction of a historic building, and I just wanted to encourage again that there are other locations, and there are other needs in the community that need to be addressed. One of those issues is crisis management with our Human Services Department. Um, there's so many different things we need to address before we put in a rec center, and putting it in that location, it's already congested and kinda takes away, detracts from what other areas in the community have to offer, and that's all I wanted to say. But, getting back to your, your assumption, we could build it out of hemp, we could grow it here and build it right here. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. For, okay, I think we've, we've stated our position, and now we also, now we need to talk about the, uh, purchase agreement, number eight. Um, Mr. Byram, do we need any additional information on this?
Uh, on this agreement, uh, is the same agreement that has been circulated at prior work sessions. It's the same agreement that has been approved by the Austin Utilities with one exception. Uh, on page two, in paragraph two, there, uh, before there was a, a requirement, a mandate, that the turbine room be saved no matter the cost to the overall project, and, and I think as the mayor indicated earlier, it's 35 million dollar project. If you find out it costs 15 million dollars to save that room, you may be less inclined to save that, that room. Uh, in speaking with a variety of the parties that are involved and the, uh, the anticipated, uh, large donors for this project, they also wanted to have a reasonable expectation, and the thought was to put in, uh, uh, an amount that everyone could agree is a, is the right amount to say if it's gonna cost more than that, it's eating too much away from the quality of the state-of-the-art facility we'll end up with. So, now this paragraph says that they will save the turbine room so long as the costs of then rehabilitating that room and incorporating it into the facility do not exceed 500,000 dollars. Uh, it also states that, that those funds, of course, would be covered by private grants, um, and it says that it can go above 500,000 if we can find additional private grants, because if someone wants to underwrite the saving of this thing for millions of dollars, I think that that's, that's great, if it's their money and they, and they wanna throw it into the pot. But right now, the understanding is that the large donors are comfortable with a 500,000 dollar limit, and any amount above that is uncertain. So, when it comes time to knowing that cost, if it's above 500,000, it'll be a question of whether that, that turbine room will be saved or not. So, that's the, the modification. I've advised the Austin Utilities that that modification was put in. It was deemed, uh, important to a variety of different voices to know where the council stood on that at this stage, so that it's not, uh, an additional meeting we have to have to argue about that when we find out the cost. Um, so we, we built it right into the, the agreement now.
Counsel? I think it's good that we agree something on it, saves conflict in the future. We've had enough disagreement. Okay, so, um, number eight, the purchase agreement, do we have anything else on that? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Nay.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Nay.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-2, Your Honor.
I wanna thank the people from the Y that came here tonight. I, we certainly recognize the work that you guys have put into this, and we're not, you know, we'll get this finished. One way, we have to get it finished. The community's gonna hang all of us if we don't, so, they know where I live.
So go and design.
All right, we'll make sure they know where you live, too. But thanks for coming tonight. Item number 10 is a resolution approving a labor contract with Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc., for 2016 through 18. Chief, or Trish, who in this? Trish, where's Trish? Oh, Trish, you should know we're black, you blend in.
Before you tonight is the approval of the labor agreement that covers the police patrol. It's a three-year labor agreement, 2016, 17, and 18. Uh, the terms of the agreement are very similar to that of the police supervisors, uh, 2% for 16, 3% for 17, and 18 for wage increases, um, some changes for health insurance language. Um, and then the one other thing for this one was adding of brother-in-law and sister-in-law for funeral leave. Otherwise, the terms are the same as the police supervisors.
That was two, three, and?
Three, two, three, and three.
Two, three, three. Okay, and that's through 16, 17, 18?
18, 2000, yep, 12, 31, 18.
Counsel, any questions? Or comments? If not, we need a resolution for item number 10.
So moved the resolution.
Second?
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with Beliscio Foods, Inc. Mr. Lang?
Yes, we review a couple of these each year. This one happens to be, as the mayor said, with Beliscio Foods. Uh, Beliscio has been in that, uh, location on North Main Street since July of 2013 already, uh, going on three years. Um, with ICM agreements, we, it's an agreement, uh, regulating the discharge of flow from the facility. We regulate, again, the flow, the strength of the wastewater discharge, suspended solids, and also pH in this agreement. Uh, things we looked at, uh, reducing some of the ICM limits as part of this agreement. We looked at their past usage and have brought down some of the limits based on, uh, them not utilizing, um, all of their capacity that we were giving them previously. So with that, uh, with those new limits in place, we would recommend approving this three-year, two-year.
One year, do we hear one?
Yeah, no, no, no. Uh, this, why don't we just say the agreement will expire July 1st of 2018? Two-year agreement.
Counsel, any questions?
No.
If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a resolution approving change orders for Nature Center Shop Project. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So, we are having a deduct, and I'd like you to approve the fact that we're gonna have a deduct of 10,517 dollars from the first phase, the shop area.
Great.
Okay. Counsel, anybody object?
Don't move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a motion approving a fundraiser for the K-9 program on June 20th, 2016, at the Veterans Pavilion. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Lieutenant Holton, who's been our K-9 handler for our department for over the last 29 years, is, uh, willing to put on a K-9 demo and a fundraiser to help our department and the city with the additional cost of replacing a K-9. The cost of these dogs, uh, continues to rise. Uh, we would like to put on this demo on June 20th from 4:00 to 7:00 with two K-9 demos at 5:00 and 6:00. Uh, it will be a, a hot dog feed, and it will be a free will offering, and we would like the council's, uh, permission to put this fundraiser on.
And if any, nobody, if people haven't been to these events, they're really a lot of fun, and I think a lot of people don't realize how much work that our dog handlers, I think Lieutenant Holton has developed a program that's really one of the best in the state, and our dogs always come in good in the competitions. So, having said that, we, any, anything for Counsel? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
14 is a resolution approving a minor subdivision petition by David and Carolyn Hillier. Howie?
Um, this is a little bit different from our usual minor subdivisions in that the property, um, the, so the parties who live at this location is 1202 12th Avenue, Southwest, wish to add some additional land to their parcel. The only way they can go is to the west, and that property is not platted. So in, in order to preserve the utility easements, road easements, to make the future plating of that area orderly and logical, we have to include a restrictive covenant. And the restrictive covenant dictates that all of these areas will be treated as easement. So there's the road continuing, and then the utility easements continuing. This does actually also still follow our, our normal process where we have in our ordinance an exemption for subdividing a smaller parcel in instances where it would be, um, an unnecessary hardship for the developer to maybe develop a whole, a few acres of a subdivision versus this is a .3-acre parcel. The, um, area also, um, in that would be left up to your decision whether it would be, uh, a harm to the, uh, surrounding property or to the city to allow this particular subdivision. So we're asking, the petitioners are asking the council to approve the minor subdivision with the, um, recommendation that the restrictive covenant be signed and recorded prior to the, or as part of the resolution.
Planning commission vote on this?
This does not go to planning commission.
Okay. Is, Mr. Hillier's not here?
Do you have some additional questions?
Does this affect, like, neighbors, like, all right, if they're gonna add this onto that? Is there, are there neighbors?
The, it's just a, an outlaw. It's undeveloped to the west.
This is out on 16th Avenue, on 21, or, County 21?
12th Avenue, Southwest and 29th Street, Southwest.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? We need, somebody wanna put forth a resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a resolution approving a minor subdivision petitioned by Austin Utilities. Once again, Holly?
Um, Austin Utilities also included a letter with your materials, but they, um, have a, um, area where they removed some of their, um, structures or equipment, and they no longer need that particular piece of property. They wish to subdivide that lot, um, and retain parcel B and put up for public auction parcel A. Parcel A would not be buildable, um, as, as it is now. Um, it would be a green space or potentially could be part of the adjoining or adjacent, uh, property if that property owner so chose to purchase the, the parcel. Um, the, they're also asking for, so they're also asking for a resolution for a minor subdivision.
Council?
Um, if it is green space, um, who's responsible for maintaining it?
Whoever purchases.
Whoever purchases it. So if nobody purchases it, the utilities has to?
They would retain it if they didn't get a bid that was sufficient, or if they were unable to sell it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Sixteen is a resolution declaring a property located at 1300 9th Avenue, Southwest, a hazardous structure. Any questions on this? If not, we need a resolution.
Uh, before you, um, vote on the resolution, I would just note that we intend to secure this property. We would not move forward with demolition at this point until we work with the county. They have, um, talked about maybe doing an expedited tax forfeiture on this property.
Okay. Any questions on this?